I called to order the meeting, the Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees, in regular session on Tuesday, March 27, 2018, in the boardroom of the administration building, 1515 Cherry Brook, Pasadena, at 5:04 PM. Board members present are Mr. Jack Bailey, Mr. Fred Roberts, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, and myself, Vicki Morgan. I know that Ms. Sullivan is likely on her way. Ms. Keano is absent this evening. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The invocation this evening will be given by Mr. Kendrick, and the pledges to the flags, Mr. Roberts. Please stand.
Father, we need to thank you for our life, and for your goodness, and your grace, and your mercy. We thank you so much for the school district. We thank you for the fact that you've put your umbrella of protection around us, and protected us very well during these crazy times. We pray we'll continue to be diligent in all that we do to protect these precious lives that we have under us. Father, we thank you for the dedication, and for the care and love that our faculty and teachers and administration all pour out in their time and effort to make our kids successful. They are known for what they are, and you've certainly blessed this district with their accomplishments, and we thank you for that. Father, we pray for those who watch over us, who are in first line of defense for us. We pray for them and their families. We ask you to protect them in the best special way. We thank you for all the blessings of life, and pray that you be with us tonight as we make decisions. It'll be in your will, in your name we ask it. Amen.
Amen.
I would pay to face the flag, but it's behind that screen there.
Okay, that's all right.
So if you would repeat with me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." The Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
The board will be going into closed session shortly, but before we do, policy committee will meet. And Mr. Roberts and your trustee assistants, will you please lead us in that policy review?
Yes, ma'am. This is really a pretty interesting policy. And what it's doing is giving some control back at the local level where really school boards really started at, where schools started, where the control was used, and the people that lived there really made the rules instead of the people elsewhere, living somewhere else. So my trustee assistant will explain to you a little bit. We'd appreciate it.
I will. The policies that we're bringing forward tonight are bringing forward and recommended as part of, or the second piece, to the District of Innovation Plan that was adopted last year. As you know, a lot of Texas public school districts adopted plans all around the same time, and so when that happened, it took us quite a while to get our policy drafts from Tasby. Once that happened, we had agreed to allow a local organization, teacher organization, to submit comments, which they did, and we reviewed, and unfortunately rejected, because we felt like they were really aimed more at narrowing the District of Innovation Plan and the laws that we were exempt from, and felt like they were trying to limit the district's local control in establishing new processes and things that we're going to follow. So we have notified them that we will be moving forward with the recommendation that this board adopt the District of Innovation policies as proposed and assisted in drafting by Tasby. If you had any questions about any of those tonight, I'd be happy to answer them.
Explain to them the fact about on attendance. That was interesting to me. And the option that now, if you have a child that has an issue... You didn't think I studied my stuff?
No, I did.
Yeah. Let's say we have a child that has missed more than what the state says is permissible, the 90 percent rule, is that correct?
Right.
Okay, now they can appeal it to, I guess, to the school district.
So they could, they always had the option to appeal, to file agreements and appeal. But as you guys know, you reviewed the District of Innovation Plan, so you know that we asked to be exempt from the laws related to that rule in particular, and the different committee process, and kind of bureaucratic approach that we had to take, or were mandated by the state to take, with respect to granting credit, based on the kids being in the chair 90 percent of the time. So, you know, this is just the follow-up to that, right? Which is a policy piece where we're saying, nope, we're formally exempt now. But essentially, we will, and we have, developed our own local process by which to grant credit. And so we have committees, and there are portions of the state process that we've kept that will be outlined in the student handbook. But essentially, it has given more local control to the school district to really determine, has this child met, you know, have they mastered the teaks? Are they mentally ready and academically ready to move on to the next level, instead of, you know, solely being, they met the right number of minutes in the classroom? That being said, we will have kind of, my understanding, and Darla, you can correct me, some sort of tiered system that will encourage and support still getting kids in attendance and coming to school. So it's not a free-for-all. It's just not necessarily defined in board policy anymore. We're moving some of that back to the student handbook, and, you know, the district administration to be able to implement a process that, you know, we feel like meets the best interests of our kids.
There's actually a committee. Isn't that correct, Darla? There's a committee that if there's a, I use the word "appeal," I don't know if that's the correct word.
Yeah, if someone's like requesting...
Yeah, they can go to the committee, and they'll determine whether or not, you know, you could have a child that's for sickness, or some type of family problem, or...
School folk, yeah.
Yeah.
Different things.
It could be a lot of different things. And so this is just giving the people that really know the situation, control in making that decision. So it's really, it's really, I think it's really a good deal.
I'm glad to see the part about CTEs, they don't have to have a teaching degree to teach a craft, and I think that's fantastic. How does that go over with St. Jack?
We've done really well this year. I'd say we have had less than 10. We're talking about in areas like small engine repair, but we're getting really qualified individuals with real-world experience, perhaps, rather than the certification. So it's worked beautifully thus far.
And so far, we've had good feedback from the campuses that have hired those folks that way.
The only thing that I guess would concern me about the attendance policy is, I feel like that it needs to be implemented across the district, not campus by campus.
It is, so it is, it's a, it will be, the student handbook will outline the procedures for that process. It will be the same process, district-wide. It will just be, those committees will be campus-based committees, from my understanding. And I could...
Each tier will be designated an amount of absences. Then here are the procedures, and this is what you're gonna have to do. And if you have this many absences, you're gonna go through this process. So that'll be consistent, which of those tiers apply to you based on the absence of you.
Okay. Well, that makes sense.
Then you have to follow those procedures.
So the committee is a district-wide committee?
Campus committee following the procedure.
The district-wide procedures. So the district sets the parameters, and then it's campus personnel that make the decision within those parameters.
As long as, you know, we do it the same way, district-wide. I just don't want it coming to the board, and us having to make those decisions whether the campuses followed the guidelines or not. They're gonna have to, they're gonna have to follow the guidelines that were set forth.
If the document on the sheet...
Yes. Okay. Okay. I'm fine with that. I trust you, but I just, I just wanna make sure.
And Joyce Boyd is also involved, so it'll be very meticulous.
Okay, good.
Yes.
This part about...
Very organized.
Doing away with the state appraisal system and having our own?
Mm-hmm.
How do we envision that as being more rigorous, since we're the ones that choose and...
So with respect to our teachers, we will be using the T-test model. What they've said, though, the state has said, is any movement off of that at all, including getting rid of some of the student data pieces and whatnot, is considered a local appraisal. They consider to be a local appraisal system. So essentially, we're kind of operating under a local appraisal system already, even though we use T-tests for teachers. We, I don't think we're using T-tests, we're not using T-pests for principals.
No.
Or not. I didn't think so. And then with respect to like, some of those people that aren't, that are on a teacher contract, for example, so are, you know, dyslexia teachers, and your, some of your special ed teachers, and they don't really fit well within the T-test system, so it gives us the ability to create our own evaluation system for them. And we actually have been doing that.
For librarians.
For librarians, and nurses.
Nurses have their own.
Yeah. So it will, you know, we will maintain the rigor that we have been operating at, at a minimum.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Y'all need anything else from my people?
No.
Thank you all.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Okay, the board is, I'm gonna change this up a little bit. The board is going to, Personnel Committee is going to meet in room L101 of the administration building, 1515 Cherry Brook, Pasadena, Texas. And we will be discussing personnel, including the superintendent's evaluation, contract, and related actions. So we're gonna adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer employee, either hear complaints or charges against a public officer employee. Superintendent's evaluation, superintendent's contract and related actions. 551.071, to consult with the district's attorneys concerning matters on which the attorney's duty of the district, under the Code of Professional Responsibility, clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act. When the district seeks the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer, consider legal advice on any item on the agenda for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. And I guess we've got it covered. So we will return as close to seven as we can be back in here. The board is going to reconvene in open session, and we welcome you to our regular scheduled meeting. And we've got a lot of new faces in the audience. I assume you're probably here to see students that are being recognized this evening, and we welcome you. We also want to tell you that after your students have been recognized, if you choose to leave, you can certainly do that. If you choose to stay and hear the rest of the business meeting, certainly welcome to do that as well. With that being said, we're going to move along, and first on the agenda is our special recognitions.
Well, board members, we're very excited tonight, because we have some awesome student recognitions. I'm gonna introduce Shannon Regozza, who takes no introduction, but she's our fine arts coordinator, and she will share the good news.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Powell. It is with great honor that I recognize individuals that excelled and represented their schools in a number of local, regional, and national art contests, with the guidance of their dedicated and talented teachers. Scholastic Art and Writing Awards is the longest-running and most prestigious recognition program, and the nation's largest source of scholarships for creative teens in the U.S. The competition is open to students in 7th through 12th grades for art and writing in 29 categories, including poetry, printmaking, and the likes. All works are adjudicated in a blind evaluation, first on a regional level, and then to the national round, and judged by professionals. All rounds of judging use the same criteria, as was established since the contest inception: originality, technical skill, and emergence of personal vision or voice. Pasadena ISD had more students than ever before that received awards at the regional level, receiving 16 honorable mentions, plus two honorable mention painting portfolios, 25 silver keys, and 29 regional gold keys, which included two intermediate students, one from Southmore, and one from Queens, and four high school painting portfolios. Two students from Rayburn High earned regional gold keys for their artworks, and their works advanced to New York City for judging at the national level by professional judges. Carla Carranza, a junior, walked away with a national silver medal in painting, and Marco Sosa, a freshman, earned one as well in drawing and illustration category.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Here's your... Marco's older sister, Melissa Sosa, 11th grade, earned two regional gold keys in drawing and illustration, and went on to earn two national gold medals in the same category. Alexis Casares, a 12th grader, earned, from Rayburn, earned three regional gold keys, three regional silver keys, and ultimately earned two silver medals for painting, a silver medal for his painting portfolio, and a gold medal for another painting. Emilio Resio, a senior from Rayburn, earned a regional gold key for his painting portfolio, eight regional gold keys for individual paintings, and was chosen for another painting as a regional nominee. Nationally, he earned a silver painting portfolio, and ultimately the national recipient of the American Vision Award. These Rayburn students that received the gold medals will now join an impressive legacy dating back 91 years. These students will be honored at Carnegie Hall in New York City in early June, and their artwork will be in an exhibit open to the public at the Pratt Institute and the Parsons School of Art and Design. Would the teachers of these students please stand and be recognized? I would also like to thank all principals that support this prestigious competition for their continued support of the fine arts programs as well. And if you'll please stand. And lastly, all of this would not be possible without the love and support of their parents. So if you're a parent of one of these students, would you please stand? Moving along, the Houston Livestock Show and Rodeo Award winners. The Houston Livestock Show and Rodeo School Art Program had more than 300 art students from 62 districts in the greater Houston area enter their artwork for judging at the district level. Once again this year, Pasadena ISD art students have made us Pasadena proud and Pasadena strong, as they excelled in spite of a number of lost instructional days due to unusual weather events. At the district level, our students earned Best of Show and Gold Medal awards at each grade level, and Special Merit awards were earned by students at the high school level. At this time, I would like to introduce members of the rodeo, who will assist in handing the recipients their district-level awards and trophies. Ms. Heather Boyce, Chairman, Pam Massey, Division Vice Chair Contest, Judy Smith, Vice Chairman Administration, Viviana Boland, District Chair, and Alicia... I'm sorry, I don't remember your last name. Alicia Smith. Thank you, ladies, for coming. So to make this move along quicker, if you'll hold your applause until after I've called all of these awards, 'cause there are a lot of them. Elementary Gold Medal Award winner is Angel Gonzalez, 2nd grade, from Pomeroy Elementary.
Wow. Okay, we're just gonna watch. Little finger glass.
Elementary Best of Show, Kiara Cormier, 5th grade, Days ofala Middle School.
Good job, girl.
Junior High Gold Medal, Nancy Alvarado, 8th grade, Southmore Intermediate. Junior High Best of Show, Tricia Nguyen, 8th grade, Bondi. High School Special Merit, Alexis Casares, 12th grade, Rayburn. Reagan Sanchez, 11th grade, Rayburn. Melissa Sosa, 11th grade, Rayburn. Marco Sosa, 9th grade, Rayburn. Guillermo Jimenez, 12th grade, Rayburn. Fabienne Villanueva, 11th grade, Rayburn. Sergio Castillo, 12th grade, Rayburn. Natalie Ordaz, 12th grade, Rayburn. Ni Vu, 12th grade, Dobie was unable to be here tonight. Tu Trin, 12th grade, Memorial High School. High School Gold Medal, 2D, Anthony Vega, 10th grade, Rayburn. 2D, Joseph Rogers, 11th grade, Rayburn. 3D, Gold Medal, Jasmine Garcia, 11th grade, Pasadena Memorial. High School Best of Show, 3D, Tu Trin, Pasadena Memorial. And 2D Best of Show, Emilio Resio, Rayburn. Okay, so out of that group of high school students, the winners then have the opportunity to be chosen for auction. So if you were an auction recipient, if you'll take one step forward for me? After he's done his photo, sorry.
I'm gonna need you to step forward a little.
So these comprise our district-level winners.
Yeah. I'm looking.
Yeah.
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 Okay, auction recipients, if you'll stay right there. Okay, auction lot 71.
Reagan Sanchez, Rayburn, sold for $10,000.
Reagan? Is Reagan right here?
You can, guys, can go back around through the line. Just get your certificate, that works. Auction lot 63, Ni Vu, Dobie High School, sold for $9,000, and she's not here. Auction lot 49, Guillermo Jimenez, Rayburn, sold for $32,000. Auction lot 40, Tu Trin, Memorial High School, sold for $6,000. Auction lot 28, Sergio Castillo, Rayburn, sold for $13,000. Auction lot 22, Marco Sosa, Rayburn, sold for $15,000. Auction lot 21, Alexis Casares, Rayburn, sold for $28,000. Auction lot 19, Melissa Sosa, Rayburn, sold for $22,000. Auction lot 17, Joseph Rogers, Rayburn, sold for $27,000. Next, reserve class champion, mixed media, auction lot 10, Natalie Ordaz, Rayburn, sold Class champion, colored pencil, auction lot 5, Anthony Vega, Rayburn, $73,000. And the grand champion, lot 1, Emilio Resio, Rayburn, sold for $225,000. Pasadena art students sold $505,000 of the $2.2 million worth of art sold at the rodeo auction. Would the teachers of these students please stand and be recognized? And I would sincerely like to thank all the principals at each of the participating schools for their continued supports of the fine arts programs. And lastly, would the parents of all of these art students please stand and be recognized for your support and encouragement, and many late nights?
Madam President, that is the state champions, as far as I'm concerned. They are the best.
Wow. Do we get this?
We get this.
Oh.
That's amazing.
Wow.
Emilio Resio.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emilio.
I tell you what, if you don't have goosebumps after seeing these students recognized and knowing their accomplishments, there's something wrong. We're in the right business, and I certainly do thank all the teachers who have gone forth and brought out the talent in these kiddos. It's absolutely amazing.
And I would like to thank the rodeo members for coming out tonight.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we have a very special presentation, and I'd ask Ms. Terri Isles of Learning Forward Texas to come forward, and she is going to present an award, a very special award. a very special award.
It's hard to follow the kids.
Good evening, everybody. It's always great to have to come after kids and in professional development, it's a kiss of death. So here I am again. But I am so excited to be here tonight because Learning Forward Texas supports educators across the state and now we've kind of gone a little bit beyond our borders because, you know, Texas can't just leave well enough alone and stick with their own people. They're gonna reach out to whoever we can. And so we have the belief that every teacher deserves quality professional learning and in order for kids to achieve, they have to have that in place. And clearly, in Pasadena ISD, you all believe that. And it's rare that you find a district where you've grown your own, but I understand that's what's happened in Pasadena. And so that may also contribute to the fact that you guys have an outstanding professional development and a professional learning organization. So you don't get where you are with your outteachers being trained and taught and worked with and guided and nurtured. And so Tracy Goodwin submitted Dr. Diane Powell for our award this year for Superintendent of the Year and Performance Excellence for Professional Learning. And so we are very proud to award you this award for this year, our superintendent's award.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can you come to the table and shake your hand?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Y'all want me to come down there?
Well, board members, I just want to say thank you to Texas Learning Forward. Tracy, you can't get away with this without standing up. When you nominate someone, you get a little recognition. She does all the heavy lifting and is Scott Harrell here tonight? He's not here, but he also works closely with Tracy on professional development. So we just have an awesome team. We have awesome teachers that take advantage of the professional learning and I feel blessed to be part of Pasadena ISD. So thank you. Now we're moving right along to Principals of the Year and we're excited about this. We're blessed to have Linda Lukacheski here and I'll let her sit through the video, but we'll bring her up in a minute. She's the CEO of Gulf Coast Educators Federal Credit Union, a longtime friend and supporter of the district. So we're gonna show a quick video and then she'll come up and help us do some presentations.
I'm sorry to say it is no longer on the desktop.
Ah, got it, I'm hovering right over it.
Good morning Eagles, we're here for a very exciting announcement. The 2018 Pasadena ISD Secondary Principal of the Year is none other than Mr. Joseph Aetra.
I'm definitely very honored at this recognition for sure and for me, it's just a great leadership. You know, about the power, you know, about the firm and how the people have supported me, but also hugely important to our staff and our body, they're the ones that have made a lot of great things happen here in Pasadena. And I just love working here, I like my kids, I love my community. I love the Eagle Nation for sure. So this is really good.
Go Eagles! The 2018 Elementary Principal of the Year is none other than Mrs. Andrea Gilger from McMaster's Elementary.
I'm surprised and shocked, but I think it's a great honor and I appreciate it. I love working in PIS, it's 27 years now and I wouldn't want to be anywhere else.
Go Mustangs!
Hi, my name is Rob Hassan, I'm the principal at Parkview Intermediate.
Mr. Hassan was named our honorary principal of the year for Pasadena ISD and rightfully so. Mr. Hassan had been in the district for over 20 years and played the role of teacher, assistant principal and principal at Parkview for over 17 years. He was a good friend of mine, we were teachers together at Jackson Intermediate back at the start of our careers. He loved kids, he had a passion for education and excellence in education. He was very supportive of staff and his Parkview Cowboys in every way. We're excited to honor his family and his memory with this award.
Go Parkview! Yeah!
So at this time, Linda, if you'll come up with, Vicky and I just kind of perch yourself right here. Sorry about that. We also want Andrea Gilger to come forward first. I know she's gonna love this. Andrea, if you'll come right up here. Let me just read a little bit about her. She served students in Pasadena ISD for over 25 years. She started her career as a music teacher at Cruz and continued at Genoa and then McMaster's. And in 1998, she assumed her first administrative role as a counselor at Golden Acres Elementary. Andrea moved into assistant principal position at Jensen and in 2004, she did that before being named principal at McMaster's in 2010. Under her outstanding leadership, the school helps all students achieve academic success by regularly monitoring their progress and providing targeted interventions for kids. McMaster's provides assistance for students after school through their ACE program and extended year services. Through her leadership, every effort is made to keep parents informed about student progress and to build a strong connection between school and home. We appreciate you Andrea for all that you have done to build an excellent relationship with students, parents, staff and the community. And while I'm getting a special surprise from our credit union, if you'll start shaking hands with the board members, because that's gonna take me just a second. And then you want to take pictures individually? Okay, y'all get your picture made right there. Linda's daughter went to McMaster's, small world. All right, Joseph Aetra, today's his birthday. So we knew he wanted to come to a board meeting. Please come forward, Mr. Aetra. Secondary Principal of the Year. I'm gonna read a little bit about Joe while he's shaking hands. He's been making an impact, appreciate ya, on the students of Pasadena ISD since 1998. He began his career as a math teacher at Jackson Intermediate, or who? Before moving to the position of AP in 2002, he assumed the role of principal at Miller Intermediate in 2004, before being named principal of the Mighty Eagles at Pasadena High School in 2009. While some of you may recognize him from his Facebook Live posts, which he updates at least five times a day, others know him for his passion and commitment in helping the Eagle Nation soar to academic excellence. As principal at PHS, over 60 students have graduated from Pasadena High School and Sanderson College with a high school diploma and an associate's degree as part of the school's early college high school program. The PEX program was piloted at PHS and serves as our model in the district and across the state of how successful it can become. We also want to acknowledge him for the five TEA distinctions for academic achievement this past school year. That deserves applause. Congratulations to you, Joe, and thank you for all that you continue to do to help your campus and community grow. And so picture real quick and then I messed up. I'm gonna let him introduce his family and then I'll let Andrew do the same. So get the picture real quick. You want to introduce your family?
Yes, I have my wife, Stephanie. She's also an educator, she worked here in Pasadena. I have my 10th grade, 15-year-old daughter Katie, my 11-year-old son Christopher and my 5-year-old son right there, Owen.
Happy birthday. Andrea, you do the same, introduce your family. Sorry about that. You have your McMaster's family.
I do have the Master's Administrative Team. I come from Rockford, this is right over there. Here's facilitators Cam Allen and Cypia Lopez and our wonderful assistant principal, Pam Hacks.
Awesome, all right. We have, of course, one more very special principal and I'll try to get through this without messing it up. But I want to invite Renee and if you want to bring mom up here and whoever else you want to bring up. Rob Hassan is a special friend of mine through many years and his mom was my school nurse, who I love dearly. And I apologize all those times I faked illness and came to your clinic at L.F. Smith. But as many of you know, we lost our very dear friend and our longtime leader, Dr. Rob Hassan. He was the principal at Parkview for many years before passing away unexpectedly on October 20th of last year. We're honoring Rob today as the honorary Pasadena ISD Principal of the Year posthumously. Dr. Hassan, or we called him Doc, as many of you know, he called me Dee and no one does that, but he got away with it. He served over 20 years and started as an ESL teacher at Jackson Intermediate before becoming AP at Parkview in 2000. During these years, Rob touched the lives of many students, every staff member and every community member he met. He graduated from Southeastern High School, like his beautiful wife, and he earned both his masters and his doctorate from Educational Leadership from the University of Houston Clear Lake. He facilitated world-world experiences for students at the U of H Clear Lake College of Education. He was one of the original 19 candidates of the U of H Clear Lake doctoral educational leadership program and he graduated in 2011 with that. Due to his exceptional contributions to U of HCL and many things that he did around the Houston community, he was recognized as the U of H Clear Lake Distinguished Alumni receiving the prestigious Marilyn S. Sims Leadership Award in 2016, well deserved. His passion for enhancing educational opportunities for students of all grade levels was always on display, so was his sense of humor and his naughtiness of doing prank calls, but that's not for here. But he reached from Pasadena ISD throughout the Houston area. While he is no longer with us, which is hard for us to deal with, he continues to remind us how we are Pasadena ISD Strong. We've got some special family members of Rob, so if y'all will do the honors of introducing?
We have a lot of people here.
That's okay, go ahead.
First, my children, I remember them.
Okay, good job.
We have our daughter, Sharie, our son Kenny, our son Jeremy, and then sisters of Rob, Cindy Allen, Sandra Vegas, Whitney Dixon and her husband, our brother-in-law, Terrence Dixon, and my parents, Gessel and Lori Paulus. And of course, we can't leave out the Parkview family.
Absolutely.
Oh, and Sam, I'm sorry.
Sam, we see ya, good job. Well, we love Rob and have missed him daily, but we appreciate y'all coming tonight and letting us honor him in this way. Thank you. Okay, I had to follow the kids, but Mary, you get to follow this. So if Mary Herriman will come up, Director of Child Nutrition Services. We have a certificate here today. I can't brag enough about Mary and her department, but since 2013, the Texas Department of Agriculture, I can't talk tonight, has recognized, awesome job, schools for their efforts to bring local foods and agricultural education to their students. This is the fourth year Pasadena ISD has been awarded this award from TDA Local Products Challenge Award. So we're very proud of our child nutrition department who works closely with our vendors to make sure to source local items and to serve our students and support Texas farmers and manufacturers. So do you want to recognize anyone from your team? Or just? If y'all will come up for the picture, whether you like it or not, she's calling for you. We're very proud of y'all, go ahead. Absolutely. Quick picture, if y'all don't mind. We have one more awesome recognition. We have a lot of good things going on, board members, so if you'll just bear with me, I'm gonna ask Derek Gillard, our Director of Purchasing, and Laurie Pruitt, our Assistant Director of Purchasing, if you'll come forward while you're shaking hands, I'll brag on you. This is the second consecutive year our purchasing department has been awarded the Tasbo Award of Merit for Purchasing Operations. The Texas Association of School Business Officials, or Tasbo, created the award in 2009. Thank you so much, awesome. To recognize those school districts with open enrollment charter schools and regional education service centers in the state that achieve excellence in purchasing operations. Derek, who is our Director of Purchasing, and Laurie, who's our Assistant Director, oversee the daily functions of the purchasing department and ensure that PISD purchases are made legally and ethically and follow all federal, state and local laws. Tasbo's Award of Merit for Purchasing Operations was presented to Pasadena ISD as a private ceremony during the annual Tasbo Conference in Fort Worth on February 27th, so that's when they first got the award. And it was only given to 30 school districts of the roughly 1,028 in the entire state. So I say that's pretty awesome. The purchasing department earned the recognized status this year and they plan to submit for this award every year and continue a tradition, so we got a challenge for them. So again, join me in recognizing our purchasing staff for this prestigious award. And if you'll get a picture and if you want to recognize anybody, but we definitely want a picture. Okay? Awesome, thank y'all so much.
Absolutely.
They work hard and they have fun, it looks like, too, together, so always see smiling faces when I go and visit. And board members, I know we had a lot tonight, but we just have so many good things going on. We limited it to five tonight, but we wanted to share with you all the success, so thank you.
Thank you.
That is awesome. We appreciate the information and we congratulate each and every one of you and those of you that could not be here tonight. We certainly appreciate and congratulate you. Okay, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. We're gonna move to the Personnel Section and Mr. Kendrick is going to introduce these.
Mrs. Morgan, I recommend that we approve Addendum A in the evaluation approval. Mr. Stan Osborne, is he here tonight?
Wait just a second, let's vote on it.
We have to vote on you first.
We have to vote on you, just a second. Mr. Osborne comes to us from another district, a Director of Accounting, and we're glad to have you and welcome to Pasadena. You came to the right side of the world.
Do I hear? Did you make a motion?
I made a motion.
Second. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. And you are now official.
Please introduce yourself and your family.
Yeah. I can tell already, it's a great place to be. I would like to introduce my wife, I'm proud of, Kristy Osborne.
That's awesome.
And my two teenage daughters, Isabella and Susan.
Wonderful. We know you're gonna love it here. Okay, consideration and possible approval of the superintendent's evaluation.
Full move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. We had previously, during closed session, gone over the superintendent's contract with Dr. Powell. Next is consideration and possible approval of amendment to superintendent's contract and related actions.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. And this extends Dr. Palmer's contract. Powell, I'm sorry.
Y'all let Rhonda know. Or maybe Keith.
Whatever your name is.
Keith, you wanna come up?
We don't want you.
It's a very interesting night we've had.
Anyway, for another year, we certainly, she's doing a fantastic job. Does everybody agree? Okay, we did vote on this, right? Okay. Next is consideration and possible approval of the reclassification of Arthur Allen and the reorganization of the Business and Technology Services Department for the remainder of the 2017-18 school year. So moved. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion?
Board members, I just want to remind you that with John leaving and all his expertise and knowledge that he's taking with him, we can refuse a retirement. Down the road, we're gonna start moving forward to make sure we have someone in place that can work side-by-side with him and make this transition easy, so Arthur will be helping in that process.
That's awesome. So motion has been made by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. We have no, I guess, certified personnel is only for, pardon?
Yeah.
It's only for?
No action.
No action. Moving to the educational section. Consideration and possible approval of 2018-19 Student Code of Conduct. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of TEA Low Attendance Waivers for J. Frank Dobie High School, Pasadena Memorial High School, and Sam Rayburn High School.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Did you have a presentation on this?
Yes. Okay. Alita Harold will be doing the presentation, and she's worked with Tom Swan as well. If you'll remember, board members, when we passed the 2014 bond, she'll give you information about where we were at with Intermediate 11. But in November of this year, I told you we would come back and give you some more up-to-date demographic information, so we're here to do that tonight. And so this is just for information only. No action.
Yes. Thank you for allowing us to present this information to you in an official capacity, if you will. As Dr. Powell stated, we wanted to make sure that we started off and started processing and trying to make decisions on the most accurate data in regards to Riverstone Ranch Intermediate School. And if, just as a reminder, in 2014, voters approved construction of Dobie 9 and Intermediate 11 due to the anticipated enrollment growth in the South Belt area, and we prioritized Dobie 9 based on the overcrowding at Dobie. And then in 2017, we revisited the pending projects of 2014, as well as the Facilities Committee asked us to reevaluate the campus enrollment projections, because what we found was that the projections, after visiting with the builders, as well as looking at our enrollment, our actual enrollment, we needed to evaluate those projections and get the most accurate count. So we started doing that, and then the voters voted, and now what we want to do is we want to come to you to start the process of thinking about the enrollment projections, as well as, as well as get your input on ideas for this area. Just to kind of give you the facility as well, not the facility, the place, the point of reference on the map of what we're talking about. This is the new housing within the South Belt area of Riverstone Ranch. So at the top of the screen, right here, you have South Belt Elementary, and then here would be the future site of an intermediate school. And then this is a zoomed-in view. And so, as we said, we wanted to evaluate the projections, and these are the most up-to-date projections for the 10 intermediates. And then those are the most up-to-date projections if we were to build an Intermediate 11. So as you can see, what our next steps are, is we want to start brainstorming and processing and discussing some possible, looking at the data and looking at the impacts of Harvey, because that is something that has impacted the South Belt area, as well as we want to continue to analyze enrollment and then also look at budget implications. So this was just a FYI for us to start thinking about and processing this data.
So, board members, just so you can see, on the first slide of boundary projection, she gives you the schools without the 11th intermediate built. Of course, we've promised that community two bonds now, that we're gonna build a new intermediate school. They go from South Belt, they go to Malolo, they go to Thompson, and of course, they go then to Dobie 9 and Dobie. You see the next slide, the projections at 582, if we were to build a new intermediate school, even with the new growth out in 2023, and you see how it impacts, drawing from Bondi, drawing from Thompson, and drawing from Beverly Hills, how it makes those school enrollments look. So it's something that, after the storm, we'll just be very honest with you, parents, community leaders, people out there started, of course, asking questions about, do we really need an 11th intermediate, or could we move Thompson intermediate so that we don't ever have to go through this again in the community? So we're just being very transparent, and here I am doing it right in front of everybody, but that's the discussion that I keep asking data to be brought to me. These are not just work through our numbers, they work with Davis projections out of California. But again, we take that data, we take the actual number of kids enrolled in school right now, because you know we've had 1,700 kids leave our district as a result of the storm, so we hope and pray to get those children back. So we've encompassed that data in here as well for future projections, hoping that those kids and homes will be repaired and they'll return to Pasadena ISD. And I'll probably say something I shouldn't hear, but we all know there's a school being built at the front of Riverstone Ranch, and it's a very shiny penny, as some would call it, to people in that community, and it's not a public school. But we want to continue just to be open to our community input and have discussions about it. But the first step that I told you is that I'd bring you the projections for you to bowl over and think about as we continue to have this conversation and continue to work further into the Intermediate 11 process.
I have a question. After Harvey, we talked about the future of Thompson Intermediate and the possibility of moving the kiddos from Thompson to Riverstone Ranch, to that area, because of the potential of the same thing happening at another time. Where are we in relationship to, what's Thompson look like today?
I'll be glad to take y'all over there. I would say, Kevin, we were frugal in our selections, movable furniture, in case a decision was made down the road to move. It's not a building that I would say is in a condition that we couldn't use it for the foreseeable future. We don't know what the future holds, because we don't know what drainage in that area is gonna continue to be like. It's not the first time that area's flooded, but of course, we had something different than what we've had in, what did they call it? The Hundred Year Flood. So Karen and I, Deputy Superintendent, have talked about if we were to move Thompson to the new site, how we would use Thompson Intermediate. Perhaps we'd bring back some of our students that go outside the district for day school opportunities and provide better environments for them there. We've talked about virtual school and kids that are outside of our school system, trying to entice them to come back to us and utilize our public school system through virtual methods and flexible enrollment. So we've been brainstorming and thinking about this, but again, I just wanted to give it to you a piece at a time before any recommendations are made, because I want to give you time to ask questions, talk to community, ask Alita, she's over that area as far as Associate Superintendent for Campus Development, and then process that information, because I know it's an important decision. We've made promises to our community, and I don't want to make a wrong decision. Yes, ma'am?
Of the 1,700 students that have left the district, is the contingent of the large amount of them from the Thompson area?
There are not from Thompson, per se. There is more of an impact at our elementaries than anywhere else. When you see staffing, go ahead.
It's in that feeder pattern with Burnett, Roberts, and Thompson.
Yes. For some reason, a lot of the kids at Dobie found their way back to Dobie, whether their own transportation or they talked their parents into it. You don't see the significant decreases in enrollment at the high school and intermediate. You do see it more at the elementary and middle. But yes, the South Belt was heavily impacted, and then along Edgebrook is where we see the most damage.
Private homes or apartments?
Both. We had an apartment complex in the Burnett area that was severely impacted, but I would say both. I've even seen homes as I drive through, because I live in that neighborhood, being torn down, and I'm not sure if that's a sign of more homes to come, but there's been a few near the Beltway that have been torn down.
You know, that school is what I'm gonna call it, right in the middle of the perfect storm. It floods over there by Sage Mount Church real bad over there, then you got the ditch over here on the other side of it that's always been a problem. You're gonna have flooding again. Y'all have done a great job on repairing that school, and it looks great, but you're gonna have an issue sometime in the future. And so, and I heard you talk about, well, maybe we could use this for this or something That school is just, just because of its location, with the ditches and the drainage and so on and so forth, it's just not located in a very, it's not, the future is not good for that school, in my mind, because of the flooding. The school's got a little age on it, you've got technology that needs to be ramped up and so on and so forth, so I just don't, if I was a homeowner right there, I would really have to think hard about it, because you're right there in the perfect storm. You're right between two flooding areas. Sage Mount's been known for years for flooding. It just so happens that's one of the core areas that flood, especially that older Sage Mount area right there. And it's unfortunate. I know the church I go to right there has to deal with that issue right there where Stutzberry is, but Stutzberry, apparently, is higher. But Thompson is?
Yes, they did not receive any water.
Yeah, see, it's just not, it's, boy, be an interesting place to, I mean, it's gonna happen again. I'm just telling you the truth. It's gonna happen again.
Not a matter of when.
Yeah.
How old is Thompson?
Thompson is, how many years?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two years old?
No, seventy-two was the first year.
Twenty-five years?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
I knew George Thompson.
Close to it.
Yeah, we knew, we knew George Thompson.
Seventy-two is when it was.
It's just, but the area out there has grown so much, and they've built retention ponds out there, but I've gotta tell you, when they built that school, there wasn't a retention pond out there, but there was a ditch they built right on the other side of it, and it was lower, it's nothing but fills, and it's never gonna flood, and I've gotta tell you, I bet you it gets pretty close every time the rain gets up.
And also, I do want to make note, with the rebuild, we rebuilt back to what it was before, and the HVAC system is in bad shape, Kevin.
We were wondering what word you were gonna use.
Yeah, well, I was, I was in bad shape. I was trying to think of a different, more professional word, but what you got? Old. Okay, there you go.
This is just food for digest, but this is gonna be an ongoing conversation, and I'll keep bringing information back to you.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Alita.
Thank you.
And Tom Swan, are you still here? Thank you.
I didn't even get to use my shiny nickel comment. I stole it.
Okay, let's move along. Consideration and possible approval of the primary request submitters for the TEA Secure Environment Teas and Alternate Approver Authority for TEA Login Teal. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the instructional materials allotment antiques certification for the 2018-19 school year. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the state-approved Innovative Courses Making Connections courses, 1 through 4, for 2018-2019, to be offered at all Pasadena ISD high schools. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the Criminal Justice Grant Resolution for the 2018-19 school year. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion?
Go get it.
Pardon?
Go get it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the Harvey Kids Education Fund Grant Award.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion?
That's wonderful.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of J. Frank Dobie High School's Speech Debate Qualifying Team Member to travel to NIE TOC, National Individual Events Tournament of Champions, on May 11th through 13th, 2018, in Denver, Colorado. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of three Sam Rayburn High School art students to travel to New York City, New York, June 6th through 10th, 2018, for the National Scholastic Art and Essay Competition Awards, workshops to be held at Carnegie Hall. Were these the students that we recognized tonight? Second. Okay, that was Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Excuse me, just a second. Consideration and possible approval of the Sam Rayburn High School Orchestra to travel to California, May 23rd through 26th, 2019, to perform the Disney Magic Music Days Festival at the Disneyland Resort. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Discussion.
I think it's wonderful that they're going to Disneyland.
Hey, that's your opportunity to go.
Yeah, I'll just tag along.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval for the Thompson Intermediate Robotics Qualifying Team Members to travel to Louisville, Kentucky, April 29th through May 2nd, 2018, and compete in the 2018 VEX IQ Robotics World Championships.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Discussion.
Four members, I think this is our first intermediate team ever to make it to the world championships, so go Thompson.
That's awesome. I saw it in the achievement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. And if you will look in student achievements, you will see that particular one on stu-, uh, on the robotics team, I believe it's in there, as well as many other student achievements. It's in there, isn't it?
Yes.
As well as many other student achievements. We are so proud of what our kids are doing across this district. It never ceases to amaze me and I'm certainly grateful for all those that help our students to achieve and give them the opportunity and the ability. Madam President? Yes. Can I ask, uh, Ms. Allen a question? Sure. On this robotics team, does it encompass all education levels of the students?
Um, yes ma'am, it's a voluntary. They get to join. This is our third year and since we have twelve students who will be joining and they're ready for students to refuse this point third and twenty fifth.
Oh wow.
That's wonderful.
Great.
Thanks for making it happen.
And they work closely with our high school teams. Of course, you've approved our high school team to travel already through your CTE approvals, so we're excited for that.
Okay, let's move to policy update and review. And Mr. Roberts, do you have something for us?
Yes, Madam President. What I'd like to do is call on my trusty assistant.
How about making a motion first?
Well, I wanna make a motion to call on my trusty assistant.
Okay.
To bring forth, we discussed this before the meeting at the regular policy meeting and we feel very comfortable with it. I think she presented it in that manner and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Roberts, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Any discussion? Would you like to say something, Jody? Do anybody have any questions of Jody that have, hasn't already been answered?
I'll just very quickly say that this, um, the policies that are in this update in particular are those that are following our DOI plan. So the board had previously adopted a District of Innovation Plan and had designated Pasadena Independent School District as an innovation district in Texas. And so this is just the policy update that follows that plan. So it brings our policy into compliance with the plan.
Very good. Thank you, Jody.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Did I hear you vote no, Fred?
No, I voted twice yes.
Moving to the financial section. Consideration and possible approval of the budget amendments.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Moving to the operations section. Consideration and possible approval of AHERA Three-Year Reinspection Services Agreement.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the schematic design phase for the new Red Bluff Elementary School replacement project. And I believe, do we have a presentation on this? Okay, let's go ahead and do that.
I don't think it was here. We'll get it opened up here in just a second. No problem. We're very excited to be here tonight. I'm Jerry Bevel with Create Architects. Also with me tonight, Roger Brownlow, project manager, Viardo Silva, project architect for the project. So we have been delighted to be selected for the Red Bluff Elementary School and we've had a wonderful time working at Red Bluff with the design committee staff, community members, students. So it's been a very active process and a lot of involvement and this is, is here tonight. And I, I have to tell you, I think it was the most well-prepared group we've ever encountered coming forward. They were ready, they had their documentation, they had information, they gave us rooms of information and even the students came with a model and plans and everything to share with us. So it has been really a lot of fun. So we're glad to be here tonight to share about schematic design. And schematic design is, if you will, it's the conceptual idea for the project. So it's establishing, if you will, defining what the puzzle pieces are gonna be and then starting to put the puzzle pieces in place. There's nothing said in concrete or stone at this point. It's just to, to look at the overall concept for the building and look at how it might fit on the site and those kind of everything. So remember, we're in schematic design at this point and we'll be back in the future, hopefully, to present the later phases of the project and we'll move to more detailed level for each one of them. So again, our process was interactive. We had a lot of involvement at the campus level and did have representation from the community as well as from all levels throughout the campus. The first thing that started, there were tours of other schools within the district. So the design committee from Red Bluff went visited several of the other campuses within the district just to make themselves familiar with what's going on throughout the district and what other campuses have done and identify things that they, might like or things that they did want to do. So that was a, a fun process to begin the whole overall charrette. Just some images, I think you have these in your book.
Yeah.
So some of the visits we made to the campuses, that we went to four different campuses. And then after that was done, then we started what we call a programming charrette. And we actually went to the campus and sat there for a few days and again, then with the design committee and representation from all grade levels as well as students and parents. And these were just kind of general discussion, interview sessions, for them to share ideas and information with us. And we documented these through what we call program cards or exec cards. And it was, you know, nothing was off the table. It was just a, a way to gather information, record information. And we posted all this up on the wall, walls as we went through the process and so everybody could come in and see what items that were being discussed. So these are just some examples of the program cards. Uh, just, uh, we immediately found out the focus of the, the Red Bluff Elementary School and the importance to the surrounding the community there and how critical that relationship is and how it was very, made very clear very early in the process and what a unique environment that is and, and the focus on the elementary school by the community members in that area. So as we went through that process, then we were able to start identifying the space requirements for the building. So this is in your book, but this is just a summary of the facility space requirements. So this is just going through and putting in a list of the spaces that we felt like were needed for the building based on those interview sessions, the quantity of those and the square footage of each of those. So I won't go through that, but at the end, what this brought us to was a total of about a hundred and seven thousand square feet for the building at this point in the design process. And we're planning for 750 students in grades pre-K through four. So that's where we are right now in terms of the, the space for the campus. So then we're ready to take a look at some of the schematic designs, the concepts and ideas that we came up with. So this aerial view here of the site, just to kind of orient you, this is Burl Street on the east side of the building. Red Bluff from the diagonal across the bottom or kind of the south edge of the building. And Thomas Avenue is on the north side of the building. Now, adjacent to the campus, here's the building on the campus. There's a city of Pasadena property. There's a senior center and some other city functions that are located immediately on the west side of the campus. And then most of the student populations that attend Red Bluff are on the east and the north sides of that campus. A few, a little bit on the, across Red Bluff over on this side, but most of it's on the north and the east side. So just to orient you right now, this is the front door of the Red Bluff. This is the main parking areas on the south side of the building. Front doors there, playground space in the back. This is the gym building. Uh, this is one of the instructional wings. This is the first grade wing, fourth grade wing is here. There are supportable classroom buildings out in the back here. Supportable classroom buildings over here on the southeast, southwest side of the building. And then this was an addition and primarily this houses the library and pre-K, K programs. Uh, like this one, just one point out. Currently, one of the big issues is traffic and stacking at the campus. So right now, this is the drop-off point of, so traffic stacks down Burl and all the way back to Thomas and actually comes back on Red Bluff here. So that was one of our challenges to come up with a, a stacking plan to try to get a lot of that traffic onto the new, onto the site of the new building. The building construction will be done in phases. These are the major phases that we've identified at this point. Uh, there may be some additional phasing or sub-phasing within this, but I just kind of want to give you an overview of what we're looking at right now. Uh, phase one, Ms. Hinton has worked very closely with us and the facilities department to identify that we could remove these three elements on the rear of the building. So two of the academic wings and the gym building would be removed from the campus. We would add two classroom buildings, four classrooms up in this area. And then that would give us this entire portion of the site in the back to look at to begin the construction of the new building. So phase one is to get those items out of the way. Phase two would be to build the new building. Uh, we've worked very closely in coming up with a plan that we could build the entire building at one time instead of having to have multiple occupancy to the building. That would allow everyone to make the shift into the new building at one time instead of multiple move-ins in that part of the building. So the existing building would still be in, the, the area would still be intact. We'd have the portables over here and then the new building would be constructed on the north side of the property. And then phase three involves removing the remainder of the building that would be in this area here, taking out the existing drive and parking areas. And then an additional phase would then to build complete construction of the new driveway and parking areas. So those are kind of the three major phases of the project that we've identified at this point. As we get further into detail, we'll, we'll elaborate on those a little more and there might be actually another phase possibly added in there or at least get all that fleshed out.
When you get to phase two and all the students are in that two-story building, what is that gonna do to parking, existing parking for the, the new building and drop off and pickup for these kiddos?
That will be one of the things we'll be working closely with Ms. Hinton. Our team could not iron all of those specific items out. That will be one of the challenges in keeping everything operating while all that's going on.
I see that as a big problem.
Very much so. So this is the site plan of the new building and Red Bluff is across the south, this diagonal across the blocks of the drawing here. Burl Street is on the east side, Thomas Avenue across the cross. And that city property again is over on the west side. So this was the white is the main floor plan of the building. It would be a two-story building. Uh, the red dot indicates the new main entry coming into the building, so the building would face Burl Street. There'd be a visitor parking area, a drive area on the east side of the building related to that main entry and the admin area. So there's a good visual control of that area there. And then we would have a large parking area built south of the building. So this would be all the faculty and staff parking other than some minor parking on the west side back by the service entry. And so I mentioned that stacking situation. So what we've done is planned a driveway. This white line kind of shows you the winding through there. But as you come in here, this would be, would be stacking cars two lanes wide and circling through this area coming to a large canopy at the south edge of the building here. So this line here stacked two cars wide equates to the area from here, Thomas Avenue, all the way back to Red Bluff. So that's about eighteen hundred lineal feet of area. So we've created eighteen hundred lineal feet of stacking space on the side. So again, there'd be some on Burl, but we would greatly change the stacking and traffic situation by getting cars off of adjacent streets around the property. Uh, again, there's a large canopy area in the south end of the building here. This area of the site would be PD and play fields, art service area and playgrounds there and playgrounds on the north side of the building related to academic areas. And then a new service drive coming out of Thomas to the service central plant area in the building on the west side. Uh, one thing that was discussed is there is still concern about traffic backing up those red lights here and causing, again, some congestion on Burl. We are going to go to the city and talk to them about building an exit drive that would exit directly onto Red Bluff. So we're visioning that would be an exit lane and it would be a right turn on. Uh, so we don't know if that would be possible, though, but we're to go to the city and be with them and see if that's a possibility. That would allow a lot of traffic to get out of this area very quickly onto Red Bluff and then make it circulate back into the neighborhood. So the campus that we've talked about, they really proposed that and we worked very closely with them and I think that's a really good idea. Any questions about site? I don't have to go over there.
How many buses do we have going over there?
One.
Yeah.
Special education. So on the floor plan, again, this is the south edge of the building. Thomas is up at the top here. Burl is over here. The red dot again takes us back to the entry of the building. This would be that visitor parking and drive area in the front. So we are setting this up so that that bus could use this as a pickup drive in the front of the building. So again, that keeps total separation of that one bus traffic and the cars and the affected parents which will be in this driveway here. Uh, as you enter the main entrance of the building, there's a lobby space. The admin area is located in this area showing the pink color. There's a central courtyard in the center. So as you come into the building, you're looking through that corridor space, entry space, back into that courtyard area. And then in the center of the building, this is the special education programs here. Uh, music, computer on this end of the building, art, science bordering this courtyard space and they have direct connection out into that courtyard area. And then the noisy area is made on the west side of the building here. So we have dining, gym space, kitchen and service areas, service yard, central plant, those items over here in this area. So between the gym and the dining area, there would be an operable wall to open those spaces up together. And then they'll have the dining space, the gym and the stage platform down on the south end of the building.
I have a question. The main entry, um, I see that there is a courtyard area, um, well, the courtyard is further down, but the main entry, you don't enter into the administrative area, you enter into a, um, like a atrium kind of area? Is that?
Yeah, it's, it's a higher ceiling area that you enter in there and there's a, a public restroom in that space and then these are security doors.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Okay.
Those are the security doors, so that prevents anyone from going into any other part of the building. So there will be seating and stuff out there. There's a lot of community involvement at this campus. So we regularly saw the lobby, a lot of people didn't open there, so that was one of the wishes, the campus wanted a larger lobby space. And then they would have access to the admin area that did not go in any of the parts of the building. The library is here in the center of the building. It has a visual connection to that courtyard space and it's centrally located within the academic areas, so the light blue are the academic areas. And that portion of the building, part of it is two-story, so there's first grade over on this side of the building, second grade over on this area, pre-K and kindergarten in the back. So we have four pre-K rooms and then six classrooms for each of the other grade members. Within these, there are student restrooms, faculty restrooms, teacher planning work area, all those elements, so that basically each of those areas are self-contained groups. And so they're, the functions stay take place in there and you're not as much traveled through other buildings or down corridors to those other elements. other buildings or down corridors to those other elements. Then, as I mentioned on the site plan, we have playground space over on either side of the building, on the north side. Any questions about first plan, first floor? And then this is the second floor. So that area across there is two stories in high. Third grade and fourth grade would be on the second floor stacked above those lower-grade levels. And then the library would be a two-story volume. So as we move up and downstairs and around this space, there would be some visual connection to that two-story library space so you can see into and through the library space as you circulate around the second.
Ms. Sullivan?
I have a question. In reading the material, it says that, I believe it's in second grade, that you're going to have folding panels. Are those going to be the heavy-duty panels? Or are they going to be those that they can just slide back and forth?
I believe the district standard is the heavy-duty water panels. We've not, we've kind of been discussing back and forth on that, so I think we've made a final decision on that. But the campus wanted to look at that possibility so they could combine with the teaching.
Thank you.
We'll have more details. And then these are just sketches or studies, if you will. So this is really just to look at character enassing of the building. We've not made any material selections or done anything set in concrete regarding the building. So this was just to kind of give you an idea of the two-story elements of the building, the admin area, the entrance lobby space. The courtyard is on the high glass wall over here in this area. So this was one of the schemes or ideas that we looked at for the building, and we've actually developed a second scheme. This is a different view looking from the southwest side of the building. This is that canopy on the south side looking back to the building from the southwest. And then this is a different idea of looking at the entry area. So we're going to be completing some of these studies, and we'll be taking those back to the campus and making some final decisions on those as we start moving what's called design development phase of the project. Same view, different change. And then this would be that courtyard space in the center of the building. So the glass on the right here would be the main street that runs north-south through the building and connects to that entrance lobby. This would be art or signs over on the west side of the courtyard area here. So they do have doors that come directly out of that space and window connections to it. And then this two-story piece in the back, that would be the library space located on the north end of the courtyard. So the idea of the courtyard is it would be a functional space. So we're working with the campus to identify elements, teaching elements, instructional elements that we could incorporate out there. And so it's not intended to just be a space that you just look at from inside the building, but that it would have some educational function and learning functions incorporated into that as well. Most of it would be a hard surface, a hardscape element with a limited amount of landscaping in that area. And again, making a multi-purpose, functional construction space. This is the schedule for the project. So this kind of outlines the programming charrette and the schematic design phase where we are at the time here at the board meeting on March 27. The next phase, we go to design development, then on in the construction documents, and then bidding and procurement, and then actually get into the construction portion of the project. And then in the upper right, this identifies what we currently are thinking, the phase we are on that. So we'll be looking at in June of 2019 to do that initial demolition on the campus and then start construction of the new building. We'll have some final activity of everything, with everything being done in January of
Great presentation. I know y'all are excited. Tammy, you have any of your group here with you you want to recognize?
No, just me.
Okay, glad to see you. I know you're excited.
We're very excited. It's been fun.
Good.
It's been hiring already, and it's been interesting because everybody has their own opinions. And I can learn that very well.
Just a quick story. I had bragged on Tammy because when the bond committee came around just to look at the building, she had fresh-baked brownies, and I really think that influenced them, but that's okay because I ate one. But I was talking to Jerry at midwinter, and I was telling him about these awesome brownies. So the very next day, they flew back to meet with her, and there were no brownies, lo and behold, and he might have mentioned it. And by lunchtime, there were brownies. So good job, Tammy.
And we had brownies and cookies.
Ever since.
And everything.
She's very generous.
It's been a really fast process.
Tammy, what year was Red Bluff opened?
1956.
My children, my two older children went to elementary school at Red Bluff, and that was before any additions. It was still in the original state. And Mr. Coleman Carter was the president of the PTA. He was also the mayor of Pasadena then. So we've come a long way in this school district in that period of time.
Absolutely.
It's amazing, as we've talked to other people in other districts, many of them who've mentioned that we're doing working on the Red Bluff Elementary School in Pasadena, we've found so many people that have attended school. Really interesting.
That's cool.
And it's truly a neighborhood school.
Absolutely.
All the way.
Thank you. Excellent presentation. Do I hear a motion to approve the schematic?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Consideration and possible approval of Louts Expenditure Authorization AEA number 007 for the new May Smith Elementary School replacement project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of Louts Expenditure Authorization AEA number 11011 for the new May Smith Elementary School replacement project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of Louts Expenditure Authorization AEA number 027 for the new Dobie High School ninth-grade campus project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of 2011 Bond Program Unused Project Funds to the Bond Contingency Pool.
We'll move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion?
I have a question.
Okay.
Everything is completed under the schools that are listed. Sullivan, Kendrick, Gardens, Pegler, and South Houston. So we're closing them out completely. Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the Budget and Engineering Services Agreement for the Sports Lighting Replacement at Veterans Memorial Stadium project and funding by the 2011 Bond Contingency Pool.
We'll move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion?
So you, I think the way Kevin said it in cabinet, "The Lord giveth and the Lord taketh." So you voted to approve giving it back to the bond pool, and this is part of the improvements we want to do at the stadium. We're getting the new scoreboard through the bond. We're getting, of course, through insurance and other monies that you've allocated to improve the field. That'll be ready, and this would improve the lighting, and it's much needed, as well as some electrical work to go with that. So just to give you the big...
Speaker's champ.
We will not have that poor referee with that sound system ever again. We have sat through some interesting presentations, but never again, sir.
Good thing it only passed.
Other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. In your board book, and there's a handout for the construction update. Does anyone have any questions? And let's move along to the miscellaneous section. Communications, there are none. Public comments, we had none this evening.